Good evening, folks, and welcome to Geneva's City Council Chamber for tonight's City Council meeting, Committee of the Whole meeting, and Special Committee of the Whole meeting for a policy discussion. I kindly ask our city clerk to take the role. This meeting is called to order.
Bowring?
Here.
Bruno?
Here.
Ruby?
Ruby?
She's the last one. Kilburg?
Here.
Casaroff?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marks?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Pashke?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
Can you say that she's here, Virgil? Because she didn't say aye.
Can we see her, though? Is she still connected?
She's coming back in.
Okay. Sorry about that.
We will record Alder Person Ruby as present. We begin our council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to ask a cool guy named Quantrell Priest to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to keep the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the first time I get to say this. Thank you, Sergeant. And can I trouble you, Sergeant, to join us on the podium? Ladies and gentlemen, this is Sergeant Quantrell Priest. Tonight, we have the honor of administering the oath of office as Sergeant to Mr. Priest. Some of you may remember when Sergeant Priest first joined our ranks, and that was, what, 20 years ago?
Sometimes it feels that way. It was five.
It was five. And you have some special guests with you tonight. Would you like to introduce your family?
Yeah. I've got my mom and dad here. I've got my lovely wife here as well, here to join me.
And recently married.
I am. Yep. We are married December 2nd, so it was a lovely celebration. Had my shiftmates with me, you know? They're my family, too, so it was a great time.
So they were invited, but nobody up here was invited.
Limited guest list, you know? There's only so many people who can fit in one building.
I respect that.
Code violations.
May... So life is good?
Can't complain.
All of you may remember that not too long ago, Mr. Priest was featured in the lovely newspaper article regarding local heroes. A beautiful picture of you talking about why you chose to become a police officer, wanting to serve, wanting to help. Anything you want to add to that story that we all enjoyed so much now that it's been five years?
I don't have a lot to add. I'm just enjoying my time out here. Glad you guys took a chance on me when I was applying. Like I said then, you wouldn't regret it. I don't think you have, because I'm still here now. So I think time's been flying, and I'm looking forward to, you know, another five, 10, 15 years. We'll see how long I can keep doing this, so.
Your dad did say that, didn't he?
Yeah.
You remember that?
Mm-hmm.
Your dad stood up and said, "You won't regret this."
Yep.
Remember we had to usher him from the room? That was kind of awkward. That was a... Dad, stop filming.
I'm filming you, not him.
Oh, yes. Yeah. You must have gotten a ticket today. Well, Mr. Priest, you've had a celebratory half-decade. Any lessons learned do you wish to share, or any surprises do you wish to share?
Um, just trying to remain patient with what we do. Can be tough sometimes. There's good and bad days.
Of course.
But I've got a great support system, you know? Most of my teammates here, we've been through the grind together. Mostly start... Started around the same time, so we grew up together. It's been one heck of a ride. I'm enjoying it. I got no complaints, so.
Fantastic. Do you mind if I open it up to the dais? If there's any comments or questions from your colleagues on the council?
Sure.
Anyone? Feel free. Well, there you go.
Thanks.
I'm trying to think of a question to ask you that we talked about before. Again, not upset about the wedding, so... You've had some younger police officers join you recently.
We did. We have, yep.
And obviously, they look up to you?
I don't know if they do.
Physically and otherwise?
Maybe.
What do you say to these young men and women?
Um, that this can be the most rewarding job if you make it. Take every day as a new start, fresh start. There's going to be good days, there's going to be bad days, but, you know, you have a great support system here. Don't feel free to... Don't be afraid, rather, to ask for help if you need assistance. We're always willing to help each other out, because we were once in their position as well, so.
Of course.
We're just here to be a helping hand or offer any guidance or anything they can need to push forward.
And do you do as you say? When you're having a tough day and you need someone to talk to?
No. I just kind of keep to myself and power through.
That's good. Edit the tape, Mitch, so it was like, way to go, Quantrell. Nice job, man.
Yeah.
I spoke to you briefly beforehand. I invited you to invite whomever you would like to join you when we administer the oath, so that opportunity is now presented to you. We will gather here in front, administer the oath, so whoever you would like to have by your side, please invite.
I'll watch you. Come on up. Can't have your back to the audience, man. I'm sorry. I'm going to invite both of you to stand right back here. That's your count. That's my back. Come closer. Tell me where you want me to stand. Number one, ready? Dad, you all set?
All set.
Okay. Sergeant, I ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Quantrell Priest.
Aye, Quantrell Priest.
Having been promoted to the position of Police Sergeant in the City of Geneva, County of Kane, have for said, do solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, the Geneva Code of Ordinances, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Police Sergeant to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Thank you. You have just one doc and a few songs. That's dinner for everybody tonight.
This is just the opening.
Yep. Except for Mom and Dad.
All right. Great. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Quantrell, I know you like to save just these, but if you need to sneak out. Yes, I'm not eating, and I work this morning, so very tired. Mom, congratulations. Be safe, guys. Be safe. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Item four, folks, amendments to the agenda.
Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the Omnibus Agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered by this City Council to be routine, and those items can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? Alder Person Mayor makes the motion. Alder Person Bowring makes the second. City Clerk, whenever you're ready, please take the role.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
She's on.
Ruby? Can you hear me?
Yes.
There you go.
Okay. Ruby, aye. Kilburg?
Aye.
Casaroff?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
With a vote of 10 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 absent, the Omnibus Agenda has been approved by this council. We jump to item number eight, Municipal Bills for Payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to please read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
All right. Expenditures total $2,017,466.80. Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's City Council packet on the city website.
Alder Person Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are available on the city's website and in each Alder Person's packet. Is there a second? Second by Alder Person Bowring. City Clerk, please take the role.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casaroff?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
With a vote of 10 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 absent, the Omnibus Agenda has been approved by this council. We jump to item number eight, Municipal Bills for Payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to please read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
All right. Expenditures total $2,017,466.80. Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's City Council packet on the city website.
Alder Person Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are available on the city's website and in each Alder Person's packet. Is there a second? Second by Alder Person Bowring. City Clerk, please take the role.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casaroff?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
With a vote of 10 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 absent, the bills have been approved for payment. All items of Committee of the Whole were addressed under the Omnibus Agenda. Therefore, we jump to item 10A. Consider Resolution 2024-70, authorizing the execution of a fiscal year 2023/2024 budget amendments. Motion by Pashke, seconded by Bowring. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so for the City Council's consideration this evening are the budget amendments to close out fiscal year '24. The details are contained in tonight's packet and include an enter fund transfer from the General Fund to General Capital Projects Fund, to close out the Cultural Arts Commission Fund, to increase the budget of beautification fund using fund balance, replacement of the microphones at the dais through use of fund balance, and to fund unexpected retirements in the firefighters' pension fund. And again, those were all spelled out in the packet this evening. A budget amendment does require a two-thirds majority vote, including the mayor, so that would be eight affirmative votes for passage. If you have any additional questions, I am pinching for Rita this evening. She couldn't be here, so I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions for the pinch hitter, Ms. Dawkins?
I'm turning the microphones off, so.
The whole time?
Yeah, I pushed it, but it's...
Hence the replacement. Yeah. City Clerk, whenever you're ready, please take the role.
All right. Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casaroff?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Mayor Burns?
Aye. With 11 votes in the affirmative, 0 votes in the negative, and 0 Alder Persons absent, item 10A has been approved by this council. Item 10B is Consider Resolution 2024-71, authorizing the execution of an electric utility easement for parcel 12-12-300-071. So moved.
Motion by Bruno?
Second.
Seconded by Bowring. Ms. Dawkins?
Let me try this again.
Dawkins?
With the microphone on. So the owner of the parcel 1212300071 located north of Fabian Parkway and east of Kirk Road has dedicated a utility easement to allow for the installation of two feeder circuits on the property's western border along Kirk Road for council's consideration. With us this evening, we do have Director Babica pinching for Superintendent Holton, who was not able to be with us this evening.
Questions from the dais for Director Babica. City Clerk, please take the role. Simple majority is required.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casaroff?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Resolution 2024-71 has been approved with 10 affirmative votes, 0 nay votes, and 0 absent. Item 10C, Consider Resolution 2024-72, adopting IDOT forms BLR 14220 and 14222 for the 2024, 2025, street maintenance operations under the Illinois Highway Code.
Still moved.
Bowring makes the motion. Pashke makes the second, and Ms. Dawkins has the floor.
Okay, so for the City Council's consideration this evening are the requisite annual IDOT forms that allow the city to utilize motor fuel tax funds for routine annual street maintenance operations. If you have additional questions, Director Babica is here to answer those for you.
Questions from the dais for Director Babica. City Clerk, please take the role.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casaroff?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
10 affirmative votes, 0 nay votes, and 0 absent. Therefore, Resolution 2024-72 is adopted. We jump to item D, Consider Resolution 2024-73, authorizing the execution of a proposal for community services public engagement program from EO Sullivan Consulting LLC in an amount not to exceed $65,000.
Still moved.
Motion by Bowring? Paper, scissors, you want to... Pashke gets it, okay? Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so over the past few years, the city has embarked upon a process to identify needs of the city as it relates to the strategic plan priority of the city provides equipment, infrastructure, and facilities necessary to maintain efficient and reliable public services. The next phase of this process is to engage the community in a collaboration to determine the future of the city and potential community buy-in for enhancements and investments necessary to achieve that vision. In order to do so, and with the direction from the City Council, it is recommended that the city engage with a consultant to help conduct community engagement, generate a consensus plan, conduct an education plan, and ultimately help secure community support for the plan generated. EO Sullivan Consulting LLC is an Illinois firm that specializes in bringing local units of government and their communities together. Through messaging, public engagement, a community committee, and scientific survey research, they will develop a plan that helps determine the best course forward in determining the city's future as it relates to providing efficient and reliable public services. As stated, the total cost for this multi-phase approach is $55,000 for consulting services plus $10,000 for two surveys. This was budgeted, and we are proposing using ARPA funds for this expenditure. And again, I'm available if you have any additional questions.
Questions from the dais. Alder Person Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor. What is our typical process for a project of this type? Would we go to RFP, or do we typically choose the consultant and then develop the plan?
So this is not a typical process for us for this type of consulting services. We've done it for strategic planning purposes for a broader, but for more specific, this is kind of a first for the city. So in this case, we looked at individuals who met the requirements that we felt and talked to them and interviewed them that way.
And how did we come up with the $65,000?
So that was through the conversations with this preferred consultant.
So that's an estimate?
Right, so it would be not to exceed. That's the estimate they provided.
Okay. And what amount was included in the budget?
So in the budget, we have a... We didn't have a single line item for this particular purpose. We have a budgeted line item for facility improvements and things that go with it of $500,000.
Okay, so it wasn't specifically...
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Anyone else? Alder Person Kilburg?
What is the timeline for their services? And we were waiting for a facilities study. What's the sequence, and how will this all be rolled out?
Sure. So as I put in the questions that were asked earlier today and that were posted on the website, we propose that it'll be about a six-to-eight month process, because it will start with surveys and then gathering the data, and then having community open houses, whether virtual or in person. And it'll kind of run hand-in-hand with that facilities master plan. So the idea is we will identify through the master plan what some of the needs of the city are, and then survey the community to see what types of needs the city would... the community would support.
So we're looking at a conclusion then sometime before the end of the calendar year?
That would probably late December, early January.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Simple majority is required. City Clerk, please take the role.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casaroff?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Resolution 2024-73 has been approved with 10 affirmative votes, 0 nay votes, and 0 absent. We're at item 11, folks, public comment. Anyone joining us this evening who wishes to address the council or bring up an issue for the council, now is your time to do so. We invite you to the podium. Share your name. You do not have to share your address unless you choose to do so. This is your turn to speak. It's our turn to listen. The floor is open. Good evening, sir.
I'm not sure if this is the right time I'm here to talk about beekeeping.
Oh, that's coming up at about 11 o'clock. No, that's coming up actually later, but thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Michael Olson with the Geneva Chamber of Commerce. I just want to extend a thank you to the city, all of its employees, and most importantly, everybody that volunteered recently to help make Swedish Days a success. So thank you all for our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm not sure if this is the right time, but I was hoping to talk about the ordinance for trailers.
That's also at 11 o'clock. That's good. It's trailers that keep bees, so it's... Anyone else? Try this for a third time, huh? Very well. New business by the council. Anyone? How about a motion to adjourn the council meeting? Motion by Casaroff. Oof, quick on the draw. All in favor of adjourned in the City Council meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, folks. The microphones will be turned off. We'll begin the Committee of the Whole meeting in just a moment.
All right. Sorry for the delay. Let's get started. Good evening. My name's Craig Maladra. I'm one of the Aldermen, Alder Persons representing the Fifth Ward, along with my partner Bob Swanson. And we're here tonight for the regular Committee of the Whole meeting of July 1st. Let the record show, all committee members are present. Is Becky still here?
She is.
Moving on to item two of the agenda, approve Committee of the Whole minutes from June 17th, 2024. Can I have a motion?
Still moved.
Bruno and Pashke. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to items of business. Item 3A, consider a draft resolution authorizing the purchase of vehicles up to the budgeted fiscal year 2025 amount of $600,000 through a joint purchasing agreement.
Second.
Bowring and Marks. All right.
So the fiscal year '25 capital equipment fund budget has funds allocated for the replacement of vehicles, which includes two single axle dump trucks with wing plow at $300,000 each. With the volatility of the vehicle market, staff has been informed that the order banks will be open for a very short period of time. As such, the request is for the City Council to pre-authorize the purchase of the vehicles up to the budgeted amount, and then should any purchase exceed the budgeted amount, approval by the City Council will be sought prior to proceeding with the purchase. All vehicles will be purchased through the state bid process, source well contract, or another joint purchasing agreement. And with us this evening, we have Superintendent Landers at the back of the room, who's happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, seeing none, sensing none, I guess we'll just move on to vote. All in favor of item 3A, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hope item passes unanimously. Item 3B, presentation and consideration of a draft resolution for a public-private partnership opportunity with Emerald RE Holdings LLC at 122 through 130 East State Street. Got a motion to get this on the floor? Marks?
Second.
Did you get it? Bowring? All right. Kathleen Tomchenko is not ready. Okay, we're moving on.
I'm almost ready. Okay, there we go. Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Tonight, we're here to talk about public-private partnership opportunity with Emerald Holdings LLC for the Roosevelt development. So this project has been in the works since 2022, and if it's accomplished, it will be the first newly constructed building in TIF 2 and TIF 3 since Aldi was constructed in So the project is within TIF 3, and that was established in 2016. identified in the downtown stationary master plan. So the proposed development meets five of the six redevelopment plan objectives shown on the screen. The only one it doesn't meet is to rehab or preserve existing buildings, because it's actually on a site right now that's vacant. Give you a chance to read those real quick. So the site we're discussing is located at 122 and 130 East State Street. It's just under an acre, and it's at the southwest corner of East State and Chrissy. Emerald Holdings is the contract purchaser, the current owner, assembled the site in 2017, and it cleared it of two residential structures. One was moved and one was demolished. So Emerald Holding is proposing to construct a project that's called the Roosevelt. I'm sure it's familiar to you, because you've seen it on a few occasions before. It's a three-story mixed-use building with first-floor retail and apartments above the second and third floors. Entitlements were approved by the city council in October of 2023. That included a comprehensive plan amendment, zoning map amendment, variations for increased setbacks. So the main retail tenant on the first floor will be Great Western Flooring Design Center, and there will also be a complimentary commercial user to occupy the second retail space. Great Western Flooring is a family-owned and women-operated flooring retailer providing products, design, and installation services. This location will serve as a design center where clients can view products and engage in design services. So Great Western Flooring was founded in Naperville in 1984, and they previously operated in Geneva for over 10 years. And then they moved to their most recent location about a block outside of Geneva's corporate limits in St. Charles. And they did not renew the lease in St. Charles in anticipation of their new location in Geneva. These are some of the services and products that Great Western Flooring provides, just to give you a better understanding of the scope of their business operation. So we originally introduced this project in 2022 when, this is prior to initiating the planning and zoning review, when they were considering the site and exploring the possibilities of the preliminary costs for developing here. And they soon realized upon those investigations that they would need to request some tax increment financing assistance, as they noted that there were extraordinary costs associated with site assembly, site preparation, utility extension, upgrades, and stormwater management. So at that time, they were proposing 12 residential units, and it was estimated that the project would need about $1.4 million in TIF assistance. So preliminary TIF increment projections indicated that the development would likely cover the incentive request, depending on how quickly the project could come together. It was expected that reimbursable costs would include acquisition, site work, and professional fees. The committee of the whole reviewed the initial request and determined that the project met several goals embodied in city plans and the TIF 3 redevelopment plan. Emerald was encouraged to move forward with entitlements and a request for TIF assistance. Emerald was also encouraged to review whether they could add some more affordable units to the project. So Emerald then moved toward redesigning the building, which now has 14 residential units, two of which will be studios to address the need for more financially attainable housing options. They also completed their engineering and secured an off-site easement that was needed. And then they pursued the entitlement process, and they received those in 2023, as I stated earlier. So in accord with all of those approvals, a revised developer pro forma was created, and we started to review that in February of 2024. So the project overview, the construction is expected to begin in 2024. The retail space will be delivered and fully occupied by 2026, with the residential units expected to be occupied by 2027. The total project budget is just under $8.7 million, and costs are categorized in the total development budget that's on the screen. So the city engaged SB Friedman to complete an analysis of the project financials, including the TIF revenue projections, to evaluate the availability of funds to support the developers' request. So the city uses a third-party consultant for a number of reasons, but it is required. One of the reasons is because it's required by the TIF Act, which requires a third-party review whenever a rate of return analysis is involved. So the review process began with a review of the developers' request and accompanying material, application materials that are submitted. And these include preliminary construction cost estimates, tenure operating pro forma, sources of funds, information on that, and requests, and the detailed requests. So a main component of the financial review is benchmarking of key assumptions driving the financial model. So that means that we really want to double-check that the numbers that are being provided are what is typical in the market. So for the development budget, SB Friedman will benchmark construction costs using industry sources and nationally-recognized suppliers of construction materials to determine whether the project's hard costs and related soft costs are in line with other projects and industry standards. And then for the pro forma, SB Friedman will benchmark the rent, absorption, and disposition value against the market data to validate the developers' operational assumptions. Next, we move on to projecting revenue. So increment revenue projections are prepared to provide the framework, so we know how much we can potentially work with within that development. So these are independent increment projections that are specific to the improvements, and they're based on comparable developments in the city and outside the city and the county. So the base EAV is currently 107,389, and the total taxable EAV when the building is fully occupied in 2027 is estimated to be 1.263,981. So the gap analysis evaluates the developers' returns with and without assistance in order to right-size the financial assistance that we're going to be proposing. So a financial model is prepared by SB Friedman, includes the construction budget, operating, projected operating revenues, expenses, and debts, and calculates the financial returns for the project. Yields with and without assistance are benchmarks against average returns for similar real estate products as reported by key industry surveys and resources. So the, once the project pro forma data is verified and agreed upon, we work to define terms and make final decisions on the deal points that will close the gap and allow the project to move forward in a framework that will be successful in the marketplace. So the analysis indicated that the project requires city assistance to achieve market acceptable rates of return and to be financially feasible. SB Friedman estimates that the project would generate a leveraged internal rate of return of 6.3% without city assistance, and this is below industry benchmarks. So to close the gap, the project requires approximately $2.2 million in financial assistance, which is about 25% of the total development costs. So with the assistance, the project would generate a leveraged internal rate of return of 14%, which would help make the project financially feasible. So the need for assistance is driven by land acquisition costs and site preparation costs. And land acquisition costs are also driven by the fact, you know, that the owner had to do so much work to get the site to where it's at today. So funds to support this project are not presently available in TIF 3. So due to the remaining years of TIF 3, the subject site and new construction proposed would not generate the amount needed to close the deal and secure the investment. So the analysis included the use of increment revenues from other properties within TIF 3, not already obligated with other developments as of yet. And it also included a look at potential sales tax as another form of assistance. So we've patched together an assistance structure from a few different sources to close the gap. So the first thing that we're proposing is that we dedicate some of the ARPA funds. So we have a $350,000 grant from ARPA funds to be provided at the completion of site work. And these are coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, which are part of the Federal American Rescue Plan Act. And these funds must be budgeted by December 31st, 2024. And they would entail work toward site preparation costs, the underground infrastructure. So that would infuse some money at an earlier stage. Next, we're proposing providing a TIF grant. And as I said earlier, the fund does not have money, so we would need to infuse some money into the TIF 3 fund. And we've come up with a way to do that with an inter-fund loan, which would be provided at final certificate of occupancy. And this would be an internal city loan to the increment revenue fund. We think it could be from the general fund or possibly from TIF 2. And it would be repaid with available TIF increment after the Pago notes. So they would be first priority, and this note, this loan would be second. Now, it should be noted that, you know, presently, we've budgeted really conservatively for TIF 3 due to East State Street Road Improvement Project, based on the loss of all the grant funds that we had prior. We do believe that we have the potential to re-secure some of these, and that would have a positive impact on the payment of this loan. I think it's important to note that, you know, East State Street is definitely a priority, but a lot of the purpose of that project is the hopes of bringing development forward. And, you know, sometimes we've got to try to figure out how to do that in concert, because we don't want to lose a great opportunity, because we can't, you know, figure it out in advance. So that's kind of where we're at with our thinking behind the TIF grant. And then we have a pay-as-you-go note, which would be provided at the final certificate of occupancy. And the note would be funded 100% by net increment from the project pins after the school district and library payments are made, and 100% of the net obligated out of the PIN increment from TIF 3. So Emerald has agreed to create a backup SSA to support the TIF funding assistance should the increment be less than projected. So that way, we would be able to charge back the development and secure that money. Just in case you had questions about the school payment and the library payment, that's a formula that's within the TIF Act that requires a process for schools, grade schools, and high schools and libraries to be reimbursed from TIF increment whenever residential units are funded using TIF funds. And the formulas are based on actual students that would be going to school and actual eligible library patrons. So it's something that you figure out along the way as the development is occupied. So then the last component of the structure would be a sales tax rebate of $250,000. And this would include 100% of the city's allocated portion of sales tax revenues, currently 1%. This is based on Great Western Flooring's sales projections. It's estimated that we would pay this back within seven years. However, we are including the second retail tenant as a potential, which would help us to possibly pay it back sooner, depending on what that, who that tenant became and what they may generate. So in addition to all of this assistance, what's not on the screen is that we're also looking to provide a $15,000 fee credit that can be used toward fees charged at permit issuance. There were some assumptions made in the modeling, and the fees actually are a little bit higher. So to cure that, we think the credit would be a good way to do that. So as you can see, it's been, it has been something that we've really tried to put together to make sure that the city's safeguarded and to make sure that we can get this project moving forward. So here is a slide that illustrates the milestones. It might be a little bit easier to see, you know, when different funding comes into place along the timeline of the project. So I just let you read that a little bit. It's similar to what I just went over, but it's in a little bit of a different format.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Who holds the pay-as-you-go note?
The city.
The city does.
Yeah.
So the 7% interest on the pay-as-you-go note accumulates on to what the city holds as a debt for that?
Right.
Thank you.
So what would, what would be paid? What are the TIF eligible costs? So the TIF Act outlines eligible redevelopment costs that can be reimbursed. And for this project, the anticipated costs to be reimbursed include acquisition costs, site preparation costs, and soft costs. These are costs that are contemplated to be covered, that were contemplated in 2022. So a lot of this has not changed from when we originally looked at it. And this is because the TIF Act does not allow for reimbursement of building costs for new construction. So the city's efforts to assist with the development in this TIF district is more than just financial. There's public purpose in achieving city goals. So several city goals are achieved, could be achieved with this project. One is strengthening the Fox River area as a neighborhood level, commercial and residential district, improving connections east and west of the Fox River, redeveloping an underutilized site, enhancing the streetscape, replacing antiquated infrastructure, and providing opportunity for locally-owned business and increased employment. And also, you know, getting a really strong retail tenant east of the river is really important, too, for our goals and objectives. So there's also additional public purposes that support this recommendation. This is a unique opportunity with a willing seller and a willing buyer. The project results in new construction in TIF 2 in a time when we have seen a lot of market hesitation. I think that some of that market hesitation can be contributed to the pending roadway project that's been out there for years. There's also financing and other factors of cost that created the TIF in the first place to, that the TIF tried to resolve. The proposed project is also at a scale, height, and bulk that's supported by the public, and it's compatible with surrounding uses. The project provides quality housing, with some units being more financially affordable and attainable. Our TIF is already eight years old, making the window of opportunity for projects of this scale more difficult. So lastly, approving this project will allow us to secure a retail tenant with a high level of success in the market. So for this development, developer shares are shown here, 75% private, 25% public. And it should be noted that this, this graph does not include the fee credit proposed. So we're glad to answer any questions or revisit any slides. I think I need to shrink down so we can see alderperson Ruby.
All right. Before we get into questions, we have folks from Emerald here.
Yes.
Tonight. Is there anything you'd like to add before we start, or do you just want to be available for questions as they come up? Okay. All right. Questions from the committee? Alderson Mayor.
Yes.
Is there a site plan we can put up?
Yes.
Let me just try to drag it over.
So State Street is up, okay. And in, in the plan for East State Street, is there a left-hand turn lane at the intersection of Chrissy? Or no, still no left-hand turn lane there? Just wondering. Drabica left already.
I am not sure of that.
It's okay. I, I just would like to know that next time this comes. Thank you.
All right. Alderson, call person, Casaroy.
One question, just what is our ARPA balance? And what share of this is, what share of the balances would be going to them?
I'll have to see if I have that here with me.
Okay.
But this was one of the projects that was contemplated as we were kind of parsing out the ARPA funding. So I'll see, I'll see if I can access it from here. If not, I'll have to respond to that question as well. I don't know how to get.
Get Ruby back in.
Mitch?
Yeah.
Mitch, can you come assist?
Just him being around me made me smarter.
All right. Brad, are you?
You want me to continue? You want me to wait, Kathleen?
I'm, I'm not sure.
Do you still have any?
I believe she's still on there. Just turn the camera off.
So using the TIF money, how will this affect any other projects that we have contemplated moving forward?
Well, we were very careful about that. So we know that there's a couple pending projects in the TIF, so we did not, we excluded those. And then we only utilized base revenues. So we, if somebody came forward with another redevelopment, they, we would be able to look at their incremental gain to be able to assist that development. So we were careful and conservative in that way. And that's kind of why we parceled out the alternative forms of funding, because we didn't, we wanted to hopefully see this development spur other investment.
Right.
So we wanted to, you know, be conservative with the use of the increment in that way, so that we wouldn't be restricted.
And when you say you excluded, I'm just to make sure I understand, you, you excluded the dollar amounts that were tentatively budgeted for other projects?
What we did was we included those sites. So like the, we have the benchmark proposal. So we didn't even look at the, any revenue from that project. We have the potential of something at Mill Race, so we excluded those pins. So we excluded the pins from opportunity sites. We didn't even include those.
Okay. And then, I wasn't really clear- And then, I wasn't really clear how the backup SSA helps us recover, potentially recover funds should they not be repaid. Can you explain that to me a little bit?
Sure. We would have the ability to create an SSA and then levy funds to that SSA to have the property owner pay that so that then it would back up. So it's, it's something that we would have an extra backstop should projections not come out how they are. So it's, we would be able to levy a special tax for that.
In the amount of tens of thousands of dollars?
Whatever we were short.
There's no requirements on the SSA on how that money is spent? Like, obviously, I thought SSAs were to improve the property and the area around it.
Well, it's, you know, similar, the TIF eligible expenses and SSA eligible expenses are, are pretty similar where you would have, you know, you're not funding any new, new building construction, so it's, you know, quasi-public improvements and public improvements.
Okay.
Which is exactly what those revenues are for.
Okay.
So.
Well, in general, I think this really lines up with our redevelopment plan for the East State Street, and it seems like something that really could spur development, especially closer to downtown area.
Yeah.
So I'm excited about it and have to listen to everybody else, but I don't see any reason not to support it at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alder Person, Bruno.
Yeah, the one thing that, one thing that did jump out at me was that our last new development in the corridor was Aldi's, which, now that I think about it, it's, it's kind of shocking. So I think this is a really difficult property. I think it can go a long way to connecting the river to the east side and, you know, to the, to the west side. Checks off a lot of our boxes, so yeah, pretty happy with it. Thanks.
Alder Person Swanton, can you hang on for one second? We have an answer.
Sorry to interrupt. But so on the ARPA funding, we have budgeted a total of $500,000 for kind of grants and downtown reinvestment. So we've already got obligated 138.8 for the Tapville Social project, so that leaves 362,000. And so with this project, we're proposing 350, correct? 350 for that, so.
So we're almost, almost done?
Correct.
Which is good.
Which is good because that has, that has a finite spend period.
Because it's the end of the year.
Correct.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Alder Person Swanton.
Thank you, Alder Person Maladra. Thank you for the presentation. I'm just going to go through the questions that I, that struck me as you were going through the presentation. The first one was you mentioned the S.B. Friedman gap analysis. Started out computing the benchmark internal rate of return. 6.3 was without assistance, 14 is after. What is the benchmark range that they're trying to achieve?
Well, I think that they are satisfied with the 14%. And I think that this developer is unique because they are also looking to find a permanent home for the business that they have too. So, you know, we definitely tried to go to a lower assistance amount and, you know, it has taken some time for us to actually get to a place where the project was still viable and we could meet the need. So this is, I would say this is the lowest that they can go. I think if they would have been able to go lower, they would have taken an earlier offer, but it wasn't working. And I think that the reason that they can do this project is because of their need to find a permanent home for the business. I think if they weren't associated with the business and they weren't looking to reestablish that business in Geneva, this project probably would not move forward, just as a speculative mixed-use developer without a tenant. So the project is really driven by the need of the retailer.
Okay, I, I guess 14% seems like a, a pretty decent return, and, and you were mentioning a lot of other intangible benefits that they're going to be receiving even in addition to the financial return, having the location for the permanent home of the business. So is there a report that S.B. Friedman provided, or is there a gap analysis that I could review?
We have a term sheet that has, you know, proprietary information. But other than that, most of our work is done by, you know, and meetings, having meetings and looking at charts that are created. So it's not like there's a lot of paperwork generated. And it's really a, you know, collaborative effort where, you know, us as the city are trying to give the parameters for what we're comfortable with and, you know, the conservative approach that we need to achieve. And you have the consultant trying to help you understand your options. The consultant isn't necessarily just writing a report and giving it to you, they're actually consulting with you, understanding your goals and your project and your financial commitments and trying to help you get there. So it's, it's not necessarily like we give them something and they turn it around to us. It's more of a process. And then we create a term sheet based on the information, the performa and the information, the benchmarking, and then we're sharing that with the developer and going back and forth on the term sheet. The term sheet then actually becomes what I just presented and I summarized. That's, you know, what is in the term sheet, and then that is able to be transferred to a redevelopment agreement. So we do have a report on the internal rate of return that has to be created for the state comptroller's office. We can provide that because that will be a public document. It has removed the proprietary information. I think I've probably provided more detail here than that report provides, but it's, it's, it's not, I, I don't have another document that's not proprietary to, to share.
Okay.
And, and because it's proprietary, because it has, you know, information about, that's specific to the development, it's got like financials and information about financing, and it's, it's things that, you know, one developer can't have another developer see, so. And it's not, not under the FOIA regulations, it's not public information.
I, I understand. Can you explain what changed then from the $1.4 million gap that was looked at a, a year and a half ago that became 2 million now? It, it's my understanding the building footprint and size did not change. The number of units changed a little bit from 12 to 14. What else is driving that?
I, I do think that the footprint was changed.
Okay.
The, the building changed, and it was, it was in response to, you know, the feedback that the city council gave to, to change the building to try to meet more of our goals for affordable or attainable housing. So that was changed. And then also, just you actually engineered the site. So, you know, you have a concept, you, you talk to the engineers, you think that you understand costs related to the project, but then when you actually dig down and actually do the engineering, there's more that you find and more that's revealed and costs go up. There's also the time period, costs have increased. So it's act, it's projected versus actual costs. So once those actual estimates come in, you know, the gap increased.
Per the chart you showed before, the biggest component of the 2 million was 1.1 million of acquisition costs. Is that a fixed cost that has been known for several years, or is that number moving? To me, that would be purchase price and then demolition and the moving of the home. Is there more involved with that?
No, I think it's been about the same since the beginning of the project, but I would look to.
Yeah, it, it has been fixed. It has been fixed since 2021.
So you have to say who you are?
I'm sorry, Josh Voight. I'm with Emerald RE Holdings.
Thank you.
And to answer your earlier question too, it's primarily driven by site costs. Stormwater, the building footprint did get bigger, but the site grade and some of the engineering behind that, that's where the biggest expense was.
So, so we did go from 1.4 million, which was the gap a year and a half ago, which included this 1.1 million of acquisition costs to 2 million. So the previous gap was only 300,000 outside of the acquisition costs. Is that correct?
Well, the total cost of the entire construction of the project substantially increased from what we originally thought.
Okay.
So land costs were fixed, everything else moved.
Okay.
In the most simplest form.
Okay. Moving on with my list of questions, Alder Person Kozarog touched on it, and that was the backup SSA. If you implement a new tax levy, how does that work with a TIF? Is it outside of the TIF? It doesn't go into a TIF increment?
It would be outside the TIF.
Okay, and that's allowable in TIFs or whatever?
Yes.
That's a, okay, fine. The sales tax rebate, you mentioned a seven-year payback.
Yes.
So just doing quick math, that's estimating that the sales taxes generated from this project is about 35,000 per year.
On average, yes.
And we're, we're going to give them 100% of the city portion.
Yes.
Of, of that piece. If they don't achieve that, how long would we go to get, recoup that money?
You could potentially go to the end of the TIF.
Okay, so the, so it's seven, it's anticipated to be seven years, but it, it's not going to be delineating, there will not be a term to that.
No, once it's paid, it will end.
Okay. Okay. And then the property tax generated, you mentioned the EAVs.
Yes.
What is the actual property tax estimate that will be paid? I'm sorry?
105,000.
105. Okay, so in 2027.
Okay.
Okay. And then just a general question, is it typical to have a building be substantially complete for the retail in 2026 and then a year later complete the other side? The residences above.
Okay.
It, it won't be spread out. It, it will be a little bit more concise, but yes, the ground floor retail will, it will just be white boxed, so it won't have anything actually in it. We'll turn it over to the tenant who will then complete the tenant improvements. So the disparity between the two will probably be more like six months.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Alder Person, Kathleen. I have a few questions. The, the interfund loan, the, what is the, excuse me, first of all, what, what is the balance in TIF II at the present time then that we're going to be borrowing from?
As I stated, it, it could be the general fund or it could be TIF II.
I, I understand that, yeah. But TIF II was also, I think, referenced, wasn't it?
It was. TIF II balance, I'd have to ask City Administrative Dockens to look that up. We, we brought TIF III balance. I think it's in excess of a million dollars.
While she's looking that up, I could go, my second question was, have we ever used a pay-as-you-go where we executed a note for a project, a similar type project where we, we use that for financing or?
I, I don't know in the history of the city whether you use that.
Well, let's say since you've been with us.
No, not since I've been here because TIF II had a balance, has a pretty significant balance. So we were able to do the funding for like the, the Country Village meets. We had like a half a million dollar funding there. We were able to do it from fund balance.
Current fund balance is unaudited. It is about 1.29 million.
Said 1.3, ding ding. So, no, we're, we're in a different situation because there hasn't been an extensive amount of development in, in this district yet. So that's why we need to fund it in a different way.
So that 1.3 million, what portion of that is, has been committed to other projects in TIF II?
Talking, I will look that up.
Okay. Okay, you answered my question on pay-as-you-go. My third question was 100% sales tax rebate.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, over seven years.
Mm-hmm.
I know in the past that we have made adjustments on the sales tax piece where we reduced or there was a negotiation as related to the amount of the sales tax. Is this the first instance where we're looking at 100% sales tax rebate during your tenure?
No, because you had 90% to.
I meant 100% though.
Well, it was pretty close. I mean, you've had, you've had 90% at Dotson Place. I think that the percentage.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was before your tenure?
Pardon me? Of the sales tax. I had to, I had to pay it out, that's why I knew.
Okay.
Because it was still being paid out while I was here, so that's why. 90% of the, of the 1%. Yes.
So that was over, that was over a period of what, about 15 years then before that was retired?
Yeah, it was a long time. It actually had no end amount, so it just kept going.
Yeah.
It wasn't a cap, where this is capped. So it actually, you know, we're hoping to pay it off sooner to get it off of the books. So we've, we've had different percentages since I've been here. We always try for 50. We usually start running the numbers at 50% of the 1%. But we, it was not able to be worked through here. Remember though, you still have the non-home rule, sales tax part of sales tax that isn't being touched. This is just the municipal tax portion of the tax.
Okay.
So for fiscal year '25, we have budgeted 60,000 for right-of-way acquisition for East State Street. And then in '26, we have money budgeted, right now it's 1.9, which doesn't, I don't have the revenue there for '26, and that also doesn't factor in if we get any of our grant money back.
These are committed, or tentatively committed?
Correct.
From TIF II?
Correct.
That's all I had. Thank you. Thank you. Alder Person, Bowery.
Thank you for the presentation, Kathleen. I agree with some of my counterparts. I'm really glad to see this project coming back forward. I think it does further a number of our established goals. I'm glad to see movement here and hope to see this come to fruition. I think it will be very beneficial to the East State Street corridor, really helping connecting things as others have noted, and help provide some momentum, I think, along with the expected actual improvements to East State Street in coordination with IDOT. I think that'll really help spur things. And, you know, I, I think TIF is an important tool to be used wisely, and we're, as you say, already eight years in, so I think it's good to try to get a jumpstart, to try to, you know, both, both get action in the TIF fund and then also see like action in real life. I think both of those things are, are really beneficial. And just, you know, I'm glad to see the city, you know, again, I think conservatively, but also creatively using the few tools that we do have to spur development that I think is really to the public benefit. And so I, I think this sounds like a good plan. Thank you.
All right. Any further, Alder Person, Mayor?
So I think I said something, I, I support this development. I think it looks nice. I think it's a great thing for this site. The one thing that rubs me the wrong way is calling studio apartments affordable housing. It's just small housing. It's still at the same market rent that you would charge for a regular unit, so attainable maybe, but it's really just small housing.
Attainable, yeah.
And with this amount of TIF, I, I wish there was a way that we could find, find a means to discount the rent on two units for qualified users. to discount the rent on two units for qualified users if possible. But I know that there's not really a legislation or a way to execute that, which is unfortunate because, you know, it's a pretty simple computation of fair market rent and then charging under-market rent and saying that that is part of the, the payback for this TIF loan that's being provided. I think that that would give teachers in Geneva and other people who don't just need a studio apartment, an option that could work for them to be in Geneva and live where they work. So if it was, you know, people that work for City of Geneva, teachers in Geneva, all the different people that work in Geneva that, you know, won't fit in the studio but would like to live here, finding a way to do that would be really great. And I understand that it's probably not possible because of the lack of legislation to support it.
Right, and I appreciate those comments. And I think that Emerald also appreciated the comments. And they did, there was a lot of time spent looking at opportunities to be able to provide that. And it wasn't like it was looked at lightly. A lot of time was taken in looking at, you know, what it did to the performer. We also had conversations internally, community development and economic development about what we've talked about on a few occasions, the legislation and how you, how you can monitor it and mandate it. And we did have a lot of conversation about that. And that was part of the reason that the project has taken this long because there was serious consideration. The resolution to be able to provide, you know, some attainable units was, was where we landed. But I do appreciate that. Look forward to working to try to further those goals.
Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, Rich Babica, our Director of Public Works, just indicated that yes, the dual-turn lane does include Chrissy. So that answer has been resolved as well.
All right.
In fact, he's there right now, trying to take a look.
Alderman Ruby, do you have any questions? Nope. Okay. Anybody else? For myself, I also had questions about the standard rate of return benchmark. But as I was thinking about it and as the question was being asked, in the end, I decided that that's not the most important thing. The most important focus for me is on how much we're willing to do to get this property to develop for this end use. I think that this is a combination of intensity that fits well with the neighborhood, a mix of retail and housing that we don't see elsewhere. It's not perfect. We never see perfect. But from my perspective, this is a, a great addition to TIF 3 and it's a good starter in that it sets the tone for the type of development we'd like to see in the area. Okay. So one other comment, this will not be on the consent agenda next week. But nonetheless, I would still like to do a voice vote on this item. So can we do that?
Why would we do that?
You gotta speak up. Sorry, bad side.
Why would we do a voice vote as opposed to a roll call?
Because I like to have people on record whether or not they support it at this point or not.
Which would be a roll call.
Oh, good point, if it's unanimous. Good point!
Okay, so you had it backwards, right?
Okay, you've been taken off the... So Alderman Swanson saves me from more things than I like to talk about. All right, voice vote, all in favor?
No, no, no.
I did, but I can, okay, sorry. Let's go with the roll call.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nay. Too many unsubstantiated numbers that I'd like to get comfortable with.
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, nay.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Miladra?
Aye. All right. Thank you. I apologize for the confusion at the end. We are up to item four, public comment. Do we have any public comment for this? What's that?
I said not yet for BKB.
You're right, not yet. We got one more meeting to go. Okay, no public comment. Item five, any new business from committee members? Nope. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn this committee at all? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.